Alright, please stand for the blood and cheer yourself.
I just sat down.
To the flag of the United States of America and this republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, we have news on the grade six math assessments.
So, thank you, Mr. Graff. I've asked Mr. Graff to come because I know that the students remember him really well from last year. And so this is for Claire Blandino and Tyler Gemza, who have perfect scores last year on the grade six math assessment. So, Mr. Graff, if you could just give us more detail, that would be great.
Sure. So, the math six assessment last year, very difficult exam. Some of the things that were covered, just so you know what we're talking about and why this is so impressive. Algebra, geometry, graphing and plotting points, how much you ever incur help, cost of each item in a multi-pack, how to determine the amount of materials to build something, rate time and distance problems to figure out how much the cost should go on in curriculum. On top of that, you have to have great reading comprehension skills, be able to do multi-step process to solve problems. It's a very, very tough exam. We were lucky enough again for our sixth grade students and teachers to have some of the best results in Western Florida. And for the first time in my, twenty plus years, a couple of kids got a perfect score. And I think it's very important that we recognize them for that because it's a tremendous, tremendous honor to have that designation. So, we have Claire Blandino and Tyler Gemza. You guys come forward.
Alright.
That's why we made calculators, Mike.
Good job, Claire. Mr. Burrows, could we get a picture?
Sure.
Come on this way, Claire. It's private. I'm gonna take a picture. Mr. Burrows, this is our fourth member. Mr. Graff, you can go.
I don't know, I'm fine with that.
That's the glare now, forehead.
You want to show some video? It'll be shadow.
Say corn.
Thank you, Mr. Graff.
Tiffany here.
Yep. And so the next point of good news is not a presentation, it's much more from the school to recognize Tiffany Quads, who was the immediate past president for PTA. For her one or two years, she'll clarify that for me, I'm sure, of being president for PTA. And she really put her heart and soul into it and turned it around with three different awards for our school district. And so I know I'm gonna massacre the Phoebe one. It's Phoebe Apperson Award, the National School of Excellence Award, and the PTA Western Region Outstanding Unit. So, out of all of the work that they did, it is three recognitions for our school district coming out of her PTA presidency. And so Tiffany, we want to thank you.
Thank you for the time. I was president for two years for the Eden Central PTA. For our School of Excellence Award, I would also like to acknowledge and thank Mark Graff, Kelly LaRosa, and Lisa Whitmer, who were also on that committee. And I would further like to thank the parents and teachers of the Eden Central PTA for supporting my visions while I was president. I would especially like to thank Camille Brunder, Trish Keys, Lisa Whitmer, Colleen Daglione, Elaine Pantoneo, John Morrow, Patty Kraus, Renee Rose, Don Adamsak, Sue Johnson, Sammy Plots, Jen Horsham, Karen Souter, Christine Cerny, Sarah Adelson, Michelle Koslak, Amy Porter, Jen Crowe, Randy Woodard, and Betsy McDonald. And last but not least, I would like to thank the Eden administration for welcoming the Eden PTA into their schools, the secretaries for helping out so much, and to the cleaners for setting rooms up for us and always being there whenever we needed you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Would you mind giving that list to Barb because I saw her hand moving awfully fast?
I got a lot of initials.
You got initials? Congratulations again.
Yeah. Moving along quite well.
Presentation by Kelly LaRosa.
Hello.
Who's right?
So, we're gonna take a look at the Common Core State Standards. After I put the slideshow together, I realized I should've really put a picture up here for you straight for the kids to be looking at. But really, it would've been great to have the teachers looking at the standards there. Yesterday, we spent our staff development day with the elementary teachers, math, ELA, special ed, AIS teachers, looking at our three through six test results and seeing how we did on each of the standards. So, we really did a close look at our instruction compared to the standards. So, a little background now with standards. Probably about eight years ago, an effort was led by the National Governance Association and the Council of Chief State School Officers, who were hearing messages from employers in this country and colleges that they weren't getting the types of students or the types of students out of high school ready for the workforce. So, they formed a coalition to look at what the colleges needed, what the workforce needed, and what was being successful, what was successful in this country and from around the world. So, they developed the Common Core standards, which were adopted by New York State in January 2011. The key features of the standards, it's important to note that they didn't just scrap all of the old standards. They built on the strengths that existed on our standards. They also made sure they were consistent as to what a student would need to do when they graduated high school, and so that a teacher understood clearly what needed to be taught in each grade level. They really listened to the experts in the college arena to know what a college student needs to do when they walk through the college door. Even though kids were getting into college without a problem, the remediation rates and dropout rates were out of line with what we would expect. And they also looked at evidence from key educators, not only in our country but from around the world. So, experts in math, where you had high levels of math and high levels of literacy, what they were doing to make their students successful. So, this is a quick little video explaining the background.
Like it or not, life is full of measuring sticks. How smart we are, how fast we are, how well we can, you know, compete. But up until now, it's been pretty hard to tell how well kids are competing in school and how well they're gonna do when they get out of school. We like to think that our education system does that, but when it comes to learning what they really need to be successful after graduation, is a girl in your neighborhood being taught as much as her friend over in the next one? Is a graduating senior in, say, St. Louis as prepared to get a job as the graduate in Shanghai? Well, it turns out the answer to both of these questions is no. Because for years, states have been setting different standards for what students should know and be able to do at each grade level. That's making it too hard to know if our kids are really doing well in the whole world and if they can really compete for a job someday. What we really need are clear goals. That's where the Common Core state standards come in. They're like a total sea change in education. Consistent, strong, clear benchmarks for English language arts and math. Here's how it works. You can think of kindergarten through 12th grade like a giant staircase. Each step is a skill your child needs to learn before stepping up to the next one. But right now, too many kids aren't really confident with like two plus two before they have to move on to two times two. We need more focus on the skills that help them move up the stairs or they can slip up and fall behind. And there's another problem. What if everyone's stairs were made at different heights? Well, here we go again. They are. So, a boy in Seattle who's rocking an A in English literature could be getting a C on his Chicago friend's staircase. Oops. We need to create consistent steps in education, too. So, first, each standard creates a landing on the staircase, a stop along the way as your child heads toward high school graduation. Each stop is a chance for every parent and teacher to focus on the skills their students are supposed to know at that step, no matter the zip code, language, or race. And more importantly, each standard makes sure all students are learning what they need to know to get to graduation and beyond. Because something like counting to a hundred leads to understanding dollars and cents, which eventually leads to understanding how to manage a budget. Secondly, the standards are consistent from school to school, and they match up against international standards, too. Now, we know how we're doing compared to just about everyone. So, even though local communities will still design their own curriculum with the same rules, everybody can compete on the same kind of staircase. But standards aren't learned. That's why we need teachers, parents, and students to help make that happen by working together to help kids meet these standards. The world's getting more and more competitive every day. But now, when our kids get to the top of their staircase, they can have way more options on where they'd like goes from there. Clear goals, confident, well-prepared students. That's the Common Core state standards.
Okay. So, there's three key differences between the old and the new standards. The new standards are very structured and very clear, like we saw in the video, follow the staircase. So, they started with the end in mind when the standards were designed. What does a graduating student need to be able to understand, to express? And they worked their way backwards. They represent clear progressions across grade levels. So, in each of the areas, there are anchor standards that slightly add a twist, starting in K, get a little different in first grade, all the way up through being a senior. But the anchor standards represent, again, that end, and then they change slightly through the years. So, they're well coordinated and connected. They're not separate. In this grade level, we're gonna study literature. In this grade level, we're gonna only work on numeracy. They are connected so that, again, it builds on each other. So, just to take a quick look at the old standards from 2005, we're just gonna take a look at the ELA standards. There was four main standards, and they had three very wide ambiguous bands, an elementary band, an intermediate band, and a commencement band. And you can see, each of the standards started off with that beginning statement. Students will read, write, listen, and speak for information and understanding, literary response and expression, critical analysis and evaluation, and social interaction. But they really didn't go beyond and get very specific other than that. So, they're open for a lot of interpretation. We take a closer look at standard two, I'm not gonna read all this. But if we look at what the students were going to do, read a variety of genres, recognize some features, understand literary elements of setting character. It doesn't take it to enough level to be specific as to what exactly do they have to be able to do. So, they were very open for interpretation. So, that's why you would see great differences in student outcomes. What this also did is it really left teachers not with a lot of direction. And it would leave them, if you look at Boom's taxonomy in the bottom, much of the questioning was just who was the main character, what was the plot? So, kind of those recall connections. And it was much harder to get students up to application, analysis, synthesis, evaluation, because the standards didn't guide you in that direction or provide you that framework. And that's what's so important. That's what colleges want you to be able to do when you walk through the door. Or an employer wants you to be able to analyze your directions for the day or what you have to do and what's expected of you. So, the new standards took this research into account. When they built the new standards, they didn't stop at those four areas. They also added in language and then paid a lot of attention to the foundational skills, who are very specific for students to be able to read. So, here's a look at just one of the anchor standards. Analyze how and why individuals' events and ideas develop and interact over the course of the text. So, a student isn't just telling you one piece of information or who the characters were or what the plot was. It's very specific. Here's just some sample grade levels. On the left is the literature, on the right is the informational text. So, they might have to explain to you why the author picked a certain setting and pull out information from the text. Or they might need, if it's an informational text, use the actual text to develop definitions of keywords. The teacher isn't just giving them the definitions, they have to build their knowledge. So, in order for the standards to be successful and them not just to be standards on paper, teachers have had training around the shifts in both ELA and math and how to implement the standards and make them successful. Just gonna go through those quickly because these really are the heart of making the standards successful. If you follow the standards right from kindergarten, you're not spending your time just in literary text, you're spending an equal amount of time in informational text, which is build that leads to number two, which you're building your background knowledge in science and social studies, not just around stories. Staircase of complexity kind of ties into the staircase from the video that you're reading increasingly difficult texts. That's expected of you no matter what. You're using the text to answer, not just your own personal experience. You have to listen to what the author says. The writing you're developing, you're citing sources, multiple document sources, and you're building your vocabulary through that reading and developing a wide variety of vocabulary in every academic area. Then in math, I'll just go through the shifts fairly quickly. You're learning more about lapses. So, you're learning a mile deep instead of a mile wide. Again, the skills build on each other, grade level to grade level. The math experts expect you to have speed and accuracy. So, it was interesting, we were at a conference today and there was a dean from Clarkson. And Clarkson is a pretty rigorous school to get into. And the STEM areas, he said even at his institution, two-thirds of the accepted kids had to go through remediation to meet the rigors at Clarkson. That's pretty hard at this class. So, that was very interesting. And math in the STEM field.
Can I just add that?
Yep.
And they do it online. And they do it the summer before school starts. So, there's an expectation also with this online learning, which I thought was very intriguing.
Also around math, not just to know the tricks, to really understand. And he also referenced knowing math facts is good. He just went at that. But the big thing is they need to explain their answer. They need to understand why the numbers are working together. Again, real-world examples, and then they fasten solved problems. But the real big takeaway, I think, it's very hard, it's a big shift, is being able to explain their answers. And if you have a math mind, you just know the answer. It's very hard to explain. So, that's a skill that really needs to be developed. So, a little background and timeline. After all the preparation behind Common Core, the research, the development happened behind the scenes before this timeline. But in April 2009, New York State decided to participate in development. They saw the drafts, they were part of those drafts. In July of 2010, our Board of Regents adopted them with the ability to add 15% more, which New York State did add 15% more to the original version. They adopted them in January 2011. And during this time is when we started with teachers having that staff development around the shifts, around the core. And then, right now, 2012, 13, all of our instruction is aligned to the core in those grade levels, moving on through high school. So, right now, we are continuing to refine our practice and look deeper at those standards. And lastly, I think everyone agrees, we all want our students to be college and career-ready and have the options available to that whatever route they want to take. And the three key parts of that are for us to have effective teachers and leaders, use data-driven instruction, which we were doing yesterday in our staff development, and a full implementation of the standards. That will lead us to what is now expected to fulfill that center circle.
So, I do, Kel. Can you? And I don't mean to put you on the spot because I know that the timeline is cranky. For the most part, moving forward, there are still a few Regents exams that are not aligned to Common Core, yet there's an expectation that our instruction is aligned to Common Core. So, can you just talk about that for a moment?
Right now, we're still in a year of the English Regents. We have a choice this year what we want our students to take. But next year, every 11th grader will have to take the Common Core exam.
For English 11?
For English 11. Algebra is already a Common Core exam. We have to give it. This year is a flex year for geometry. And then moving forward, you will see the Science and Social Studies exam become Common Core aligned. So, they had a plan of getting the two key areas of ELA and math implemented because they tied it to the Science and Social Studies area. So, that phase is coming also. And with the expectation of the literacy standards, Science and Social Studies are supposed to be integrated in those standards into their instruction, which we are working on.
One of the things that I learned when I was researching Eden is that Eden was ahead of a lot of the schools. Even in Erie One, in terms of professional development, that was done. Can you just talk about that for a minute?
Every teacher, probably two to three years ago, had to go through three phases of training with BOCs, a Level One, a Level Two, and a Level Three. So, Level One was understanding the shifts in their area and having a full day staff development on that, understanding text complexity, and understanding the standards for their area. And then we also went further and teachers got together at grade levels and dissected each standard and pulled out keywords and worked to understand what does the standard really mean, what do I have to really do to have a student be able to do that. And now that curriculum is changing through that process, our staff development is ongoing on understanding the curriculum, understanding instructional strategies that support that curriculum, and a lot of staff development around data-driven instruction. So, formal data, standardized tests, and then informal data, your day-to-day operations and your unit tests, taking data from that and using it to improve student outcomes.
How often do you have the trainings?
Staff development days, some days over summer.
Okay. So, it's like once a quarter?
Once a month. We have, some are half-days, some are four-days. This year, we basically have once a month through most of the school year. And then, like this past summer, there was optional workshops. Teachers could decide to go through BOCs.
Do the teachers have a professional development plan for their particular, whatever they're teaching?
As of right now, no. So, not a plan specific to them, but it's more of as an department. What is the English department working on, or what is the math department working on?
So, it's not individual?
No. Because they all, and they need to meet as a group or a grade level to discuss their curriculum and discuss their instruction and meet with a BOC specialist.
Now, so if I could, what I've noticed in the yearly schedule, and I would thank the board for adopting that, is that we embed our professional development into a day when students are either not here all day or they come half-day. Some school districts actually have professional development over the summer that they pay teachers to come for. It's an added expense for the district. Or they have time after school that they also do professional development. We have buy-back options. We have the option of summer. But we don't require teachers to come in outside the school day to do it.
So, we try to embed it. It is embedded in our staff development day.
Sure. Our teachers, I know modules, I've heard of modules. Is that their only, like, instruction that they have as far as paper? What kind of instructions do they have?
The module is a guide to a Common Core-aligned classroom.
Are we sticking to the modules? Is that our guide?
That's our guide we adopted. But through training, they learn that it's not a verbatim guide. So, they need to know their students. Most importantly, they need to know their standards because the standards is what is driving your outcome. And they would use that as a basis to form their lesson plans. But they make adjustments because you can't have a book that fits all, you know, a guide that would fit all students.
Are you finding with those modules that the teachers are able to, like, stick to them? Are they relevant? And what do the teachers think of them?
At first, they're like, it's a shift in their teaching because it puts a lot of ownership on the student. The student is the driver rather than the teacher being the driver. There's tons of group work and student collaboration because that's what research shows improves student outcomes. So, they kind of go through that learning phase. It's new, it's different. They need together. I've had a teacher up here say, "Can you stop into my classroom and watch this lesson?" I'm like, "That's fabulous." Every student in the classroom was engaged. Every student had written answers to everything. They had collaborated in a group. Then they had a report out, and that happened all period long, rather than a passive learning where you hope they're paying attention and you think they are, or they get churchy and sometimes they're a lot. So, it puts them in a go mode where they are active in class, all, all places.
So, on a whole, have you gotten feedback from all of our teachers? They're on board, they're struggling. Where are we as a school as far as the implementation? And we're one year in? Two years? We're two years in?
And the lower grade levels have been added longer. Their materials will release sooner.
Okay.
Like as far as English 11, there's only one module that's out.
Okay. Does that make it difficult for that teacher? Because if there's only one module that's out, how many are modules are there?
There's four in a year per grade level.
Okay.
Prior to there even being a concept of modules, during those three years prior, they were working on creating their own aligned curriculum using the tri-straight rubric where you put your text through a rigorous application process. That was more difficult, I think, than having, here's a guide to do, and here's what you're gonna use, and pick what works out of it.
Okay. So, then I guess my question is, if there's only one module out, and there's four, is that fair to the teacher that...
They'll use that module when it's appropriate. I believe in 11th grade, it's in the back module, if I remember correctly, early in the year because now that's module one. They'll be out before then. So, no, if the first year, it's harder because you're learning as you're going.
Okay. How are we doing in the math department?
The modules have been out. Yeah. They've been first, they're using, yeah, they were out early.
Okay. And they're all out? Okay. How about, I do have one more question. The eighth grade math assessment test, it's tested on Common Core.
Correct.
With the students that are ELS? ESL? ESL? They still have to take that test even though they're not proficient in reading in English?
Yeah, on all, every test.
So, that within itself will bring our scores down.
And if a student has qualifies as ESL, they would have ESL instruction and support during the school year, along with other services.
But there has been a one-year delay for the ELA, for those students.
I'm not sure.
I think the complication in it is this, is that we take a look at all of our subgroups and recognize that some of our subgroups truly have advantages and some of them have inherent disadvantages, being as ESL or maybe a student with a reading disability or so. All of them, though, should graduate in Regents exam. And so, this is an opportunity, I look at it. They have delayed... And so, so this is an opportunity, I look at it, they have delayed some implementations for some subgroups. But of course, what's starting to happen in New York State, and that's why I think Kelly is saying, "I'm not sure," is that we have to end up following some things that haven't even been signed in yet. So, so the implementation, everyone admits, has been a real bit quick.
Well, sometimes you hear, but this might have been a proposal, but then it hasn't been voted on.
But you're supposed to follow it. So, I think that we follow what we're supposed to, not necessarily knowing what's been signed into law yet, just because we're told by our regulations that we need to do that. But honestly, our honest goal is to get all kids to graduate through the Regents exams. And when I talk to parents, this is what I say to them, is that the seventh and eighth grade assessments and those before that are an opportunity for a student to truly get rid of some of that anxiety about taking a test, because they're going to have it when they take a Regents exam. And the Regents exams do count for graduation, where these really don't. So, for the student, it's an opportunity to just get it, to just get it under their belt. So, that's the way I've always looked at it, as a former special ed teacher, too.
Like, when we looked at our data on our staff development, day three through six, that was really about our curriculum instruction. So, we looked at the standards, where we were above the region proficiency, what standards we were at, where, what standards we did address, and how are we changing our instruction? So, that's what that data analysis is about.
So, did you actually, instead of just going over data, was there any instruction on the curriculum that they're teaching right now with Common Core?
As they looked at, the endpoint of that was looking at the reading standard, identifying the standards that they want to work on, and then, yes, as a grade level, how, what, where do they need to put their instructional focus?
Okay. One more question. Um, the teachers that are helping the kids with special ed, are they versed in Common Core?
If you're a special education teacher, please sit right with us.
Yep. Okay. I'm going to tend to maybe disagree with that on a couple, but I'll talk to you about that later. Okay.
You good?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Ready?
Dan, I think it's just at the wrong scope.
A little big.
This button?
The green one.
The green one. Ah-ha. Yeah, that worked. Perfect.
Okay. Are there any requests to withdraw specific items from consensus items? Okay. Um, then I move that the following consensus items be approved as listed in the administrative memorandum, A through M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
All right. If anyone would like to speak, you have two minutes. Please state your name, and please keep to the two minutes.
changes that have been made for this school year. And it's not just because I live on School View, and my son walks to school, my children walk to school, it's the safety of crossing School View. I don't live close to a corner. There's no, I live right where the corner veers off. People fly around that corner, and I thank Mrs. Sandstone for going to the town board meeting to try to lower the speed limit, but hitting a child at 35 or 25 is not going to make a difference. Something else needs to be done. These children really have no place to cross. My daughter walked last year, no problems. During the beautiful weather, any of the children on Hillbrook, in the Weller subdivision on School View, will have no problems getting to school safely. I'm concerned about the snow problems. Kids having to walk in the street, to cross the street, to get to their bus stop if it's in the Weller or on Hillbrook, because on Hillbrook, the snows might not be followed on the sidewalks. There's two point, there's 254 million cars on the road today. Wasn't like that bad rain the day, and my dad will argue with me that we walked from Melon to Monah, freezing cold. There was only 107 million cars on the road. Didn't have the distractions, they didn't have the amount of people that were driving in a hurry to get somewhere to a job. So, I'm just asking you to please revisit this situation. These children should be our priority, getting them to school safely. I don't think the 90-something thousand dollars you are thinking you're going to save is going to be because of localizing and centralizing the transportation or eliminating school view. It's going to be because of the decline in enrollment. You had, what, 140-plus kids graduating from high school this year, with only 80 kids in kindergarten this year. So, you're going to lose your amount, you're going to save your money based on the drop in enrollment, not really losing those kids with the way you're doing the transportation now. I think something needs to be done. In the winter, it's going to be a problem. My husband, last year, got my child to cross the street, be plowed, just so she can get to the sidewalk, and the plow would come down the street and bury her. She had no safe way. She was walking in the street. You know, it's just, it's not safe. And something needs to be done, or something tragic is going to happen, and no kid's life is worth the 90-something thousand dollars you think you're going to save from doing that. So, I appeal to you, I appeal to everybody, please try to do something, because these kids' lives are worth more than what we're planning on saving. I know there's been...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Petrie, Carl 3145, Cherry Lane. We also, excuse my voice, we also have a concern about transportation. We do appreciate the board making a concession. Instead of our kids walking to school, they have a central location, they have the kids picked up. Right now, it's Cobblestone and Cherry, or I'm sorry, Cobblestone and Weller, which I have some maps for everyone to look at, if I'm asking about these. Set. meet at Weller and Cobblestone. As you can see, that intersection, the intersection of the street right there, the neighbor, which you can see through block number 10, has stakes in the grass. That started about two weeks ago, or no, I'm sorry, about 10 days ago. So, now myself, some of my neighbors, we have to park on the street. So, realistically, now we have 15 kids standing in the middle of the road. And Weller Drive in the morning is very, very busy. A car cannot even get down Cobblestone without the safety issue of one of the kids getting hit, which, that almost happened today, like with your wife, I believe. I don't know if she told you. Three kids walked in front of your wife. Once again, there's a safety issue. Okay? My neighbor Andrea and John Reed, I don't know if you have a copy, once again, we have a cover letter and we have a petition from the neighbors. I don't know if that's in your packet. If it isn't in your packet, I have copies. We have it, we don't have it, pass those around, please. Now, this is in part of my two minutes. We're talking up a lot of time. Now, keep going. So, as you can see, once again, we're talking about safety issue. What we propose, or asking the school board to consider, is there's an intersection of Cobblestone and Cherry, which has been the central pickup for all the kids in the neighborhood since this new transportation policy went into effect. And most of the kids that are on Cherry and Cobblestone live right there on Cobblestone and Cherry. And as you can see, on the left-hand side, that is a dead end. So, we have no concern when it comes to safety. No cars can come through there at the present time. Someday, it is going to come through there. Andy Romanowski is going to come through there. And right now, with the pickup at Cobblestone and Weller, the school bus goes down and makes a turn on Merrill Place, which is a U shape, which you can see to the right on the top. Picks up a central location, turns around, and shoots back down to the school. So, what we're, like I said, what we're proposing is the school bus come down Cobblestone, pick up the 15 or 20 kids, usually 15, on the corner of Cherry and Cobblestone, proceed down Cherry Lane, come up Weller, make a right-hand turn on Weller, and make a left-hand turn on Merrill, picking up the kids at a central location, coming down Merrill, making a right-hand turn, and proceeding to school, which may take an extra 10 seconds, 15 seconds, or it may take a minute. Biggest problem we have is safety. We feel down here is much safer than up on Weller and Cobblestone.
And also, I'd like to point out that there's a kind of a blind curve on Weller as it comes up from Cobblestone, or on Weller coming to Cobblestone. You can't see the traffic at the light. I've almost been hit multiple times pulling off of Cobblestone on the Weller, and the car comes flying, even after I've stopped. You know, it's, it's not a safe place.
So, that's what we're proposing. We're asking the board to look at that very seriously. I have to say it again, safety. The other question is, is there a time factor on this? Will it be tonight, tomorrow, a week?
We'll discuss it.
What, a four decision?
It won't be tonight, I know that.
Okay.
But we'll definitely discuss it, and we'll get back to it. I mean, we're, I think we've been more than willing to meet with everyone on this. And I don't see an issue here. Well, I'm not saying I don't see an issue, looking at this is what I should say. And we'll take a look at it, and we'll get back to you.
I know budgets are tight, as the elected official in the town, budgets are tight. We try to save wherever we can.
We'll get with the Transportation Director, and we'll review this. I think it's a fair, what they're asking, and we'll take a look.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Craig Hutter, 3126 Cherry Lane, right on the corner that Bob was talking about. And I just wanted to emphasize everything that he said, and everything that the lady previous to that said about the chokes of safety. Snow plowing is going to be an issue. The card that we received in the mail indicating what corner we're supposed to wait at, as a student must be waiting to the bus 15 feet from the road. Now, on that corner, like Bob said, the gentleman on the one side has already placed stakes alongside the road. The opposite side of the road, on the west-hand side, there's a big building there. And being that I live up on the corner of Cherry and Cobblestone, I know what happens with the plow. They come around the corner, and all that snow is deposited right on that corner, which is going to make it very difficult for the kids to have any place in the wintertime to stand there without being out in the road.
Are you talking about the corner of Cherry Stone and Cobble? Of Cherry and Cobblestone? Are you talking about Cobblestone and Weller? Weller and Cobblestone?
The existing bus stop.
Yep, understood.
Cherry Lane is a dead end on that side. I'm right on the corner, you know, driveway's maintained. There's an area there that the kids can stand, there's no through traffic. You know, all the folks that have lived there have been there since the kids have been born, and they're familiar with all the kids in the neighborhood. I just think, you know, again, that would be the safest pickup point for all those kids down there, being that the majority of the kids are in that, that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Does this one?
That's for me to follow suit with my neighbors. So, I'm just going to quickly say my name is Henry Noreid. I also live on the corner of Cobblestone and Cherry Lane, and I don't take up much time, but, again, the safety thing, our kids are mean work to us than anything, and to go from one end of the street to the other, and still be able to maintain a proper bus route for everyone else involved, would be very much appreciated. We love our kids, we just want everyone to be safe, and we don't want to have to worry. I have a five-year-old, a little girl. Right now, I'm currently taking my children to and from school, because it's just not worth it for me to have to worry about them at the corner. So, I have a five-year-old, an eight-year-old, I pick them up, I take them. I would like to be able to know that they can get on the bus safely at some point, when it happens, and it will. So, as a mom, and as a dad, and as a parent, I ask you to please take this into consideration for us, and I know you will do your best. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hey, new business, resignations. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation of part-time science teacher Stephen Dillsworth be accepted effective September 8, 2014.
Second.
The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mr. Dillsworth for his service to the district.
Second.
Discussion?
I'd just like to say that Steve Dillsworth was a part-time science teacher for us who took a full-time position at Springville.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the resignation for the purpose of retirement of bus driver Gladys Kern be accepted effective September 5, 2014. The Board of Education and Administration wish to thank Mrs. Kern for her 36 years of service to the district.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Appointments. I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Tammy Congelosi, who is permanently certified as an NX, N through 6 teacher, be appointed as an extended leave substitute pre-K teacher to replace Margaret Cuddahy effective October 24, 2014, through approximately December 8, 2014. Salary is $95 per day.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Is Tammy here? Okay.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Eric Schultz, who is permanently certified in Biology and General Science, 7 through 12, Earth Science, 7 through 12, and Chemistry, 7 through 12, be appointed as a part-time science teacher, .33 FTE, effective September 8, 2014, through June 30, 2015. Salary is based upon ETA contract, Masters, Step 1.
Second.
Discussion?
This Eric is replacing Stephen Dillsworth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Is Eric here? Okay.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the 2014-2015 district goals be adopted.
Second.
Discussion?
I'm going to ask maybe that we table this. I'd like to have maybe a few of the teachers give a presentation on their professional development plan for their subjects instead of just letting that go through. I need more information.
On the goals?
Correct.
You're talking about Goal 2?
Goal 2, yes.
I don't have an issue passing it tonight, but I haven't.
What more information would you need? What exactly would you be looking for?
I'm looking for to see, like, the presentation was the old standards, new standards, to see how the teachers are making the switch, implementing it, how the kids are adjusting to it, and actually see what the teachers, how they are progressing with Common Core.
What does a presentation affect with goals, though? What do you need?
That would be the result of the goal, instead of the...
I guess maybe because of how rushed Common Core was pushed on all the schools. Yes, it should be a goal to implement it properly, but yet, I feel as though from teachers that I've spoke with in this district, that they're struggling with it. So I would like to have a more public presentation from a few teachers and just to see how they're doing.
I think we can do that without, and still approve this. I mean, is there an alternative to not implementing the Common Core standards?
There is not.
I don't think there is.
There's not.
So I think we can still make this part of our goals to effectively implement the Common Core state standards and then examine how we're doing with that. I don't think that's inconsistent.
But if our teachers haven't been set up for success with the standards, with their training that they're getting, then at this point, I think that it's not a reasonable goal.
Well, the goal is to effectively implement it. So I think our hope is that we're going to effectively implement it. I don't see what the issue is with having that as a goal. I mean, we're not getting rid of Common Core.
No, I understand that, but in the same sense, if the teachers have questions about how and have not been totally trained in the use of the modules and stuff, is it fair to set a goal like that for them?
The modules are different than the standards.
Right.
That's really important for us to know. The only point that I would like to make in this one is that the Common Core state standards are driving our Regents exams. And it's incumbent on us as educators to implement the Common Core standards so that our students pass the Regents exams and can graduate.
So not passing this goal would keep us...
No, we'll still keep doing what we do.
Yeah, right.
The reason that it's up here, one, honestly, is because the superintendents are charged with effectively implementing Common Core standards, and then we bring it down as far as we possibly can into the rank season of the students so that they understand what Common Core is. But secondly, because we feel it's incumbent on us to effectively implement these standards so that our students are successful, which is why it's here. Whether it's here or not, we're still going to do it.
Right, you have to.
Because we have to. Right. I just thought it was important for us to have the conversations that we recognize the focal point that we have. If in fact, our school is not effective at implementing the Common Core standards, we will become a focus school. And if we become a focus school because we're not meeting annual yearly progress, or participation rate, or we're not doing well, then the state will come in and they will start to micromanage what we do. We've seen local schools have that happen before Common Core because they weren't making AYP. So we will do it either way. It sends a message if the board has it as a goal, or not.
Yeah, I agree that the goal should stand as how we implement and set parameters around getting to that goal and measuring how we're doing is what Patty's looking for, is not changing the goal. So I don't, no delaying this would cause us to change the goal, it's just we would need to measure the goal and how we're doing against it, just like anything else. When you set a goal, like, you know, I'm going to run a 5K race in 10 minutes, you know, you measure yourself to get to that goal, so you don't change that goal. So I don't see why delaying this vote on the goal would cause us to change anything.
What I can do is I can get some data for you for the next board meeting to show you what we are doing to implement the Core standards now, so that you see what it looks like and what may or may not be changing in the next year or so as we go forward, whether that be with professional development, whether it be with time, whether it be what we've done before, or even surveying the teachers. We could take a look at doing that, too.
How about instead of data, maybe some teachers giving a presentation on what they're doing to make the change?
That'd be great. Yeah, you had one last spring. I don't remember who came in and did the math for us, Lauren?
Two teachers came in.
Yes, you absolutely were Judy, and so Catherine Laverde was too. So they came in and did the math. If you remember, they had it up on the screen, you had to talk about it. We could absolutely do that.
Maybe we could get somebody from the high school level.
They might be a little less comfortable because it's newer for them, but we could certainly try.
Okay.
Okay.
But I think your concerns are, we could pass this and address your concerns because we're saying we're going to look at the implementation and make sure it's effective. So I would suggest we pass it tonight and continue to examine, you know, speak to the teachers and so forth, and make sure that it's being implemented effectively, and that's consistent with the goal that we're setting. Does that make sense?
I actually agree. It does. It does make sense.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, Amy Francisco's hours as a physical education teacher be increased by .04 FTE to .85 FTE.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the route hour changes for transportation personnel be approved.
Second.
Discussion?
The only thing I'd like to add to this one is that I have asked Rose Hecathorne, who's the supervisor for transportation, to have her bus drivers keeping track of students who consistently ride and students who are not. As you know, in 2011, New York State changed the law of having to have a seat for every student on the bus. We know that our buses are not full, but yet, it's difficult for us to determine what students are going to ride and which ones aren't. So in about a week or two, we will be getting those tallies back from our drivers. And when we do that, we'll be able to see just exactly how efficient we are with students who intend to ride. The law is very clear that we have to save at least 10% of the seats for students who may choose to ride when they choose to ride. And so our goal in two weeks or three is to take a look at our student population that is currently riding, especially those on the outskirts that are older, in some cases that don't ride, and you may also see us making a recommendation for rerouting again.
And the only other thing I would add is, this transportation personnel, this is the standard every year, this is just what they're bidding on the runs. That's all that is.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I move that upon the recommendation of the superintendent, sheet music from the Eden Elementary School Music Library that is outdated and beyond its useful life be accessed.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Information and proposals from Administration, Marissa Falcaro?
Let me go over it. Just very quickly, with the transportation issues and being cut, and we had a parent suggestion about how to help out parents in the community with kids that were walking and parents that had to leave for work early, we decided through continuing ed that we would offer a morning drop-off program that started the first whole week of school. It runs at the elementary school from 8 through 6 kids through the continuing ed program. Each morning, we have 15 kids each day, I think we're up to 16 on Tuesdays, Thursdays, and it's overseen by one of the four phys ed teachers, myself, Mr. Whitman, Ms. Francisco, or Mr. Vernon, all week. Every morning at the elementary program in the gymnasium, we are still taking any enrollments. We have information that's available on the website for continuing ed. And we're just, we're doing a morning active program, basically to keep kids active and to try to help out some parents in the district.
So low impact?
Low-impact activities. Low impact.
Low risk?
Yes, low risk, low-impact activities.
And so if you're doing this at the elementary school, then you're putting those GLP students on the bus?
When we close up the gym at 8:25, well, 8:20 roughly, we walk down to the elementary, or down the hall to the bus drop-off. We'll wave on the first group of kids, they come off the bus, and once they're off, then I'm putting my three little ones for the GLP on one of those buses, and they take them over to the GLP.
And what is the cost per day, Marissa?
It is $7 a day that's through the continuing ed.
Thank you for doing that. I know that you spearheaded it, so thank you.
Dave Martin?
Safety Meeting Committee, Dave Martin?
Okay, good evening, thank you. I'm not going to give a stand because I got a big mouth. Sure, okay. Before I really begin the presentation, I just want to say some thank yous. It was a very, very, very short summer for all of us. All right? Not only my cleaners and my maintenance people, but for secretaries and for guidance and transportation. And I just would like to take a moment and thank all of those people, technology, the mechanics for prepping the buses, for all they did this summer, because it really is a yeoman's job to take this short period of time, tear these buildings apart, put them back together, and be ready to accept these students in September. So again, I'd just like to take a moment and say thank you to all those people that were involved in doing that, including the Administration.
I agree.
Last time I was here, I alluded to the fact that we were going to have a drill, an emergency drill. And it didn't really spill the beans at the time because we really didn't want it to get out as to what it was and what was going to happen. So today, I'm here because the drill has occurred and we have some information, all right? So on May 28, the Eden Central School District, in conjunction with a ton of Eden Emergency Services personnel, conducted the district-wide emergency drill. Little information was given to any of the participants in an attempt to make the drill as realistic as possible. In no case were any students placed in harm's way or directly involved in the actual events that you're about to view. The videos themselves were compiled in compliments of the students of Mr. Jones' media production class, and they were only given the task to simply film the events in the areas they were assigned. They too had minimal information about the drill, and the final video clips they produced were based on the assumptions of what they observed. Now, the scenario. The scenario that was played out is that an angry parent had been informed that his child, a primary school child, is being taken from him by CPS after having met with the district and being informed of suspected abuse. The parent had become agitated over the situation and intended to seek revenge against the principal at GLP for her role in the child's removal. In order to better secure his chances of locating the principal, the perpetrator enlisted the assistance of a friend to create a diversion at Eden Elementary School while he tracked down the principal. Now, I'm going to play a video clip, and I'll be stopping it at certain points and providing some narration. Now, it's not that I want to blow you out of here with the sound, but what's important is that not only is what's going on and what you're seeing, but listen for what's going on in the background, because there are some things that are happening that are kind of critical to what you're going to see.
The following events took place on May 28 in the town of Eden.
All right, I'm going to go in, go to the front door, pretend like I'm a worker going down to see the boiler. I'll drop one package in the front steps. I'll make my way to the basement, drop the other package, see if I can pop out this back door, and give you the high sign. If not, just wait a while and then go do your thing, and just go, business is planned, all right? All right, shoot them up.
Okay, the package that he's talking about were two explosive devices that he was going to plant in the elementary school.
One of the perpetrators signals his friend to let him know that everything is going to plant. First, the perpetrator checks the side door for an opening.
What he's doing is he's trying to get buzzed in. Now, what has happened is the first person that went in the building, which actually was Matt Coleman, he's already been through the main office, signed in like he was a worker coming to see one of my employees, and bolted from the office. So I'll play the clip, and there's a couple things that are out of sequence, but you'll get the idea as to what happened. He couldn't get in on purpose because of what happened with Matt Coleman.
Now he goes to check the front door. The principal of Eden Elementary initiates lockdown because of the suspicious activity going on outside the school. The principal of Eden Elementary initiates lockdown because of the suspicious activity going on outside the school.
This is typical lockdown procedure. All of the doors to the rooms are locked. Okay, that ring you're hearing is actually the gunman trying to get through the doors. And this little screen you see right here is actually the intercom to those doors. So it's not really a telephone that's ringing, it's the gunman actually trying to gain access to the building.
Now the principal is calling the police.
Uh, yes, uh, gentleman, baseball cap, glasses, blue shirt, carrying a small bag with him. And he also didn't put that in the bag. Yes, for... Adult. Yes, we are. Yes, this is going...
After calling the police, the police department responds to the call.
And that would be an adult or juvenile? An adult. Okay, all right, and you are in lockdown. He's somewhere in the building, nobody knows where.
She's going to call it the high school, but she's really talking about the elementary school.
Okay, Mr. Graff, I'm going to get some help over to you. If anyone should see him again, please call me back on 911 and give me the updates that you can, okay? Thank you.
She now calls in squad cars to take action and go to the scene.
There are two suspicious persons complained at the high school. Principal advises...
As nothing happens, the perpetrator leaves the scene and goes to the next school down the... Meanwhile, at the high school, they get news about the lockout. Or lockdown.
Okay, the elementary? Eden Elementary went into lockdown. Lockdown?
Yeah, they initiated a lockout.
Okay, for the sake of clarity, lockdown versus lockout. Lockdown is when nothing happens in the building, all the students are secured in their rooms, and all of the exits are locked completely shut. In a lockout, you're going to see a number of teachers and staff members come to the office, they're the critical response team. They will go to assign the doors and greet anybody that tries to get in through those doors to determine what their business is. All right? There is a difference. The lockout education continues in the building. In the lockdown mode, education is stopped and all activities cease in the building.
And they don't know why the elementary school's in lockdown?
They have really no idea at this point. All right? Now, what you're going to see is Ms. McKenna is actually going to come by, she's looking at her cellphone. That was one of the means of communication that was being utilized by the people, and it was not planned by the people that were involved in this scenario. Act, fine, permit?
Principal Sermoni now alerts the faculty and students that they are going to a lockdown drill.
... outside our building. I repeat, all faculty, staff, and students are going to a lockout due to an issue outside our building. Where is lockdown? No one is allowed to enter, believe the notice. The LPL turned off, the building will be directed by the mayor. Students will be dismissed to the next classroom in the P.A.
Secretary right now is to safely all of the tons to pass class.
At this time, ask the critical response team to report to the main office. In addition to all unassigned teachers, once again, critical response teams and all... Jeff?
Hey, Sidney.
We open those free.
Okay. Yeah, hold on, let's be brief, please.
You want to stay there? And don't let anybody in.
Principal Sermoni is now going to assess the faculty and tell what's going to happen.
What's going to happen here is the critical response team, all heads are assigned to specific orders for the lockout. So every door in this building will be locked. No one is allowed to come in or out. The only entrance that will allow will be the...
The single gunman now is headed to GLP. Matt Colvin, the assistant, is still in the elementary school. He's turned the fire alarm system on. That building is right now in a lockdown, just creating the diversion for him.
And there was no last in time?
There really wasn't. Okay, a couple of things to think about. If there's a gunman that's going to come to a building, what you heard in the background was actually a police radio. If a gunman was going to come to a building, he certainly would do what any normal person would do. He'd probably carry a scanner, so he could listen to what was going to happen with the police, fire, and anything else, and have an idea if they were coming after him, all right? It just happens that the perpetrator, in this case, happens to be a reserve police officer, and there was a radio in the vehicle. So, what he's going to do now, and I don't know that you're going to hear it all, is he's going to park in an area that is basically restricted from traffic, parking there. He'll be confronted by two of my guys.
The perpetrator has now shot two janitors down at the GLP. Somebody in the main office sees suspicious actions taking place and alerts...
Please, excuse me, charge is cleared now, we're in a lockdown. Once again, we are in a lockdown.
Okay, this is a little out of sequence, and I need to explain what happened here. What you heard in the background was another radio that the offices had. She was actually listening to the activity at the elementary school and put the building in lockout.
She didn't see what was going on?
She could not see what was going on.
Well, they weren't there yet.
Right, they weren't even there yet. What's going to happen now is the vehicle is going to come in. She will absolutely observe the shots being taken.
She now watches and sees the janitors getting shot.
That button...
He now checks this school's doors.
Disabled on the exterior doors.
The perpetrator goes around the back of the GLP to look for an opening.
Now, from a police response standpoint, the police officers are down at elementary trying to deal with who's in that building. And now he's moved to GLP. There's a call actually made, the police department advising the prison gunman on premises. And that's what you hear as the officer responding. The officer's making an assessment from the exterior of the building. He's checking my two guys who are still alive, trying to get information from them as to where the gunman might be and what they saw. So he can make his rounds to figure out where he needs to go.
To everyone's relief, the police show up to apprehend the perpetrator.
It's the front entrance of the GLP.
The perpetrator is shot down, the officer alerts backup and ambulance.
I got this up. There you go. I got a subject down outside the back of the GLP.
Okay, get his system secure.
Now he checks the rest of the grounds to make sure all is safe.
All right, prior to EMS being dispatched to the scene itself, although they were dispatched arriving at the scene, that police officer did not only an exterior sweep, but went into the building and went completely through the building to make sure there was no other gunman in that facility. Now, in the real-world scenario, there would be far more police officers than what you saw. That gentleman was the only police officer that was involved in this whole drill. And he worked his butt off between the two buildings. Did a great job.
The perpetrator is being taken care of, and now he will be taken to jail. After all is taken care of, the high school goes on with its regular day under close surveillance.
Okay, now, in the infamous words of Mr. Paul Harvey, the rest of the story. Where is Mrs. Carter? And I will defer to the superintendent.
So you have to put on pause.
You want it now or after?
No, now. So this is happening before the drill, that's ended before the drill, and I walk into Mrs. Carter's office, as I generally do when I say, "Let's go for a walk." And she looks at me horrified, like I can't go. I'm like, "Sure you can, let's go for a walk." And she's like, "But we've got the drill." I said, "We're going for a walk." So you have to watch her face as she looks at Brenda, because she recognizes that Brenda Bergstaller will really be the one in the office. But it's important for us all to know that the staff that we've trained, and Lawrence did a great job of training everybody at GLP, can handle it when we are not there. And the expectation that a principal would always be in their offices is not realistic. And so getting her out of the office was a goal of mine that made her very angry.
Here it is again.
This is not fair.
And, Mrs. Carter? Where were you with the superintendent?
We were in lockdown, we had to be completely hiding, no one could be seen. And when the police officer came in, he would tell you, "You can find your soul." And the principal and the superintendent were hiding behind a couch in bed. Would not find us at all. And it was filthy behind there. And I was so upset.
And I know the rest of the story.
But I was not shocked.
Okay, now, the conclusions that we drew from this is, first off, when one building goes into a lockdown, because of the proximity of all of the buildings on the campus, we've decided that the smart thing to do is for everybody to go into a lockdown. Although the high school went into a lockdown, and believe me, they did an awesome job with it.
Went into a lockout?
They're into a lockout. They did an awesome job with it, and as you can see, there's a lot of chaos involved in a lockout, because there's a lot of people involved. So, in a lockdown, you wouldn't see all those people, boom, we're all going to our areas, and everything just basically gets locked up. And we'll stay in a lockdown until information comes and we know what we can do with the buildings. We also know that communication was an issue, all right? There were a lot of text messages flying around, back and forth. Radio communication was pretty much nonexistent between any of the offices, although they have them and they were listening to them. So they had some idea what was going on. All right? Obviously, the students and staff at all the buildings followed the emergency procedures extremely well, given the information they observed and heard as the drill progressed. Although Mrs. Carter was intentionally removed from her office and not allowed to coordinate, the building occupants, what was evident and... What was evident and commented by numerous factions of the emergency services personnel is that the building appeared completely empty and unoccupied. Kudos to the entire building for being well-prepared and Mrs. Carter for training them to respond properly. Sincere appreciation is due to all the participants, the town of emergency services personnel, and to the district for taking the steps necessary in allowing these training exercises to occur. As we move forward to our next large-scale drill, we expect to have more of the bugs worked out and even a better understanding of how to respond to these stressful situations. In anticipation of the next drill, we're currently scheduling meetings with the local officials and drill participants to review the shortcomings and to develop better plans to address future incidents.
Could we have one more thing, too?
Certainly.
Mark Stevens at the elementary school was instrumental. Could you talk about that for a moment?
Yeah, what happened, if you remember, I said that Matt Colvin walked in and he had two packages, both of them bombed. Well, the first one, as you walk into the front door of the elementary school, you read it with the stairway going to the second floor. Matt threw it into a corner over there. Matt threw it into a corner over there. Mark happened to be in the area, and he observed that, and he let Mr. Graff know that that occurred. Matt carried the second package into the office and registered after Mr. Graff confronted him, saying, "You need to sign in and do what you have to do." So, Mark really was heads-up on what he saw and communicated that properly to the principal so that appropriate action could be taken. So, questions?
Comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
Classes that are outside, phys ed classes, or classes that are out, maybe just outside for recreation.
Yep.
Is there communication with them to get the word that the school is going into either a lockout or a lockdown?
We are working on some issues, then yes, there is. Right now, PA systems are working throughout all of the buildings in the exterior. In the case of some of, like GLP, the teachers are carrying walkie-talkies.
They go outside, they carry walkie-talkies.
In those situations, they're told to go immediately to the Legion.
Okay.
Right. In the high school, they're going to take safe shelter under the bleachers.
Okay.
Or Tim Hortons. We're on the other side of the road.
Tim Hortons.
Other questions? Okay, thank you much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Martin. That was very well narrated, like the voiceover of the video.
Okay, do we have a business report?
We do, actually. We were going to have the BAT schedule under superintendent's, but we moved it up under mine, and just what has been passed out before you is looking at the BAT's schedule for your review prior to the implementation for the coming year. And really, what it's looking at is building on last year. And this year, we are looking at beginning at the December meeting, that is, when we start getting some of the financial information prior to December. It's a little bit early to begin the process. One of the things that we actually did learn from last year is, as we get closer to the end of the season, we may need to add meetings as needed. So, what you're seeing here before you is, again, a tentative schedule, and just depending on where we end up in the conversation, it is possible we may need to add time again for another meeting here or there as needed. The two community forms worked very well last year. We would not deviate from that. This year, we've added them back in again as well.
And also, just to add, that the decision at the last board meeting was, as we get toward the end of the year, when the budget advisory team may need a little extra time, that we would look to adjusting the start times of the board meetings by 15 minutes to 30.
And Tom?
Yes.
And this is open to anybody to join?
For the budget advisory team?
Yes.
Well, what I was going to do, and I believe I said at the end of last year, is I wanted to reach out again to the committee members from last year. And those who do not join, then it would be open up to anyone else.
Okay.
It is an open meeting, though.
It is an open meeting. So, yes, for everybody sitting in the audience, what I would say is, please, the meeting started at 5:45, please feel free to do, just as you're doing right now, to sit and watch and see the budget process in work. Actually, I thought it worked very well. Our committee members worked very hard. The committee members are learning the budget process there. It's a lot that goes into a budget, and we invite everyone here to sit in and watch the process as well. And, second, well, any more questions on this before I bring up another point, actually, for a meeting we're at today? It's good news. The good news for today is a new initiative that is potentially on the horizon from the governor's office. It's called the Smart Schools Initiative. And what you're looking at so far with the governor, most things that he has proposed has gone through. This is something that will be on the ballot in November for all voters, and that is to whether or not to pass a multi-billion-dollar referendum to increase technology across the state. And for our district, for our school district, what that would mean is additional $958,000.
How much?
$958,000.
You should say that more than once.
$958,000. So, we like hearing when more money comes here. Now, what does that mean for us? Exactly what kind of plan do we need to come in place, put in place for technology? We don't know. And the reason we don't know is because the governor's office does not know.
I think it goes back to something Patty was saying earlier about implementation, right? Sometimes we have to operate when we have no idea.
What was interesting, Kelly was referencing the meeting that we went to today, the symposium from the governor's office that was put on, just outlining a little bit about Smart Schools. It did not address any specifics as to what would be required, what are the recommendations as to what we should be putting into a plan, when a plan would be due, any of those specifics. Really was more just overall buy-in from preaching to the choir crowd of how we need to build infrastructure across the street, across the state. And I don't think anyone doubts that. We agree, everyone does.
It's possible that there may be something on the November ballot from the state of New York, but we don't know that.
I believe it will be on the ballot, from everything I'm hearing.
That's good, okay.
So, I've heard nothing yet, the contrary. So, but, more will definitely follow if it's on the ballot, if it passes, that is good news for all of us. My guess is it probably will be a fairly quick implementation, and then they'll set the guidelines out after they implement it, so we'll see. But, good news, though. Any questions on Smart Schools?
Yeah, I'd like to just know, before I vote on anything, what is required of us? What are we signing off on or voting on?
We would too.
Yeah, for that kind of money, yeah.
We would, too.
Absolutely. That's it for me.
Okay, thank you. Superintendent's report?
So, what I did after the board adopted the resolution on the real property tax law, Section 458A, from the last meeting, is I then, Barb was very kind to have it drafted up and make sure that every one of the board members signed it. We then sent it on to a number of organizations, some being recommended by our district superintendent, David O'Rourke, and so we sent it off to NISBA, we sent it off to NISCUS, so the superintendent's council, the School Boards Association for New York State. I'll be speaking on it at our next district superintendent and school chief officer meetings. Also, we sent it to the Rural Schools Association, which we recently joined, the Erie County School Boards Association, and also to the governor. We did receive two responses back, both from NISBA, which is the New York State School Boards Association, thanking our district for doing the work on that and saying that it was a model resolution that they would then move forward to show other districts. So, I commend the board and Colin for drafting it, for taking a move to state that we have no, that we would want the state to take ownership of the money that is being diverted. In terms of opening a school, everybody was excited to see the students come back. As Dave Martin mentioned before, it was an awfully short summer. I do believe that we will be having much conversation, not just our school, but many schools, about what we really mean by shutting school down in June and starting it back up in September, because for the most part, we can't breathe for six weeks. There's just so much to do and so much extra paperwork that's required by the state of New York that we really do need to look at doing things differently over the summer, which means, basically, maybe we won't wax every single floor in the summer, maybe we won't clean every single room in the summer, maybe we'll have to take a look at throughout the year how we sequence that, because it really was such an incredibly short summer that, I think, three days before school started, we were just looking around, saying, "How is it even possible that this could happen?" And so, I echo Dave Martin in really, really thanking everybody who just stepped it up to make sure that our students came in, and also our teachers, so many of them were in ahead of time, to make sure that our kids came into classrooms that were bright and vibrant, and floors that were clean, and a school that was clean and polished. And also, to everybody who worked on getting that sidewalk in front, I've seen many people walking on it, which is really nice. In terms of enrollment for the district this year, and I'm going to ask Tom just to interject when I finish, so that you can give a little detail. In terms of enrollment for this year, we started out the school year with about, on September 1st, with about 1,508 students. I think it's important to note that at the start of the 2012-13 school year, we had 1,611. We lose approximately 40 to 50 students per year, and this has been going on for the past four or five, going back into 2008 or '09, when we had about 1,800 students in the district. At the current projection, if nothing changes, and we simply take first grade, move it on to second, assume nobody moves in, nobody moves out, for next year, we will be at about 1,453 students. It may seem as if class sizes will get smaller, as if there may be more space on the school bus, as if, in fact, this idea of crowded schools kind of goes away for us, but Tom's going to interject why that's really a bigger problem than what it seems.
Well, the big reason is really money. And the less students you have here, the state really reimburses us based on the number of students. Less students, less money. So, when you're looking at roughly $10, $11 million that we receive in state aid, based on the number of students, that number goes down. That puts more of a pressure on us, because, again, from the tax levy, which is just over $13 million, we're only able, really, to raise a tax levy at most by the tax cap. So, if you can only go up by the tax cap, and your state aid then starts decreasing because of students, it really leaves you between a rock and a hard place as to...
And it affects capital project aid, building aid, transportation aid, instructional aid, just...
Right, I grouped all the state aid lines together.
All of them together, yeah. So, you get hit more than once for the same issue.
Otherwise, we had a really, really great start, and I believe that the kids have had a blast so far. We've had one open house for the junior/senior high school already, which was a change of pace, and I've heard wonderful things about it. Elementary school open house coming up tomorrow, information night for parents next week for GLP. I would also like to thank, and we did accept a donation from the Eden Athletic Association back at the July meeting, but I would like to thank the Eden Athletic Association, and especially Eric Cooper, for the donation of the dirt for both our baseball and our softball fields. The dirt came at a time when David was throwing his hands up in the air, because the weather really just did not cooperate at all with us in June, which is when we really wanted to bring the dirt in. In July, there were other issues, and so the dirt came in right before school started. We do apologize for having the dirt sit there, but the kids had a blast on it for at least two Saturdays during a baseball game that I saw. It is all down now, and I don't know what the real terms are for spreading it out and tilling it, but there is more work that will also need to be done on it. But, basically, we just want to thank the donation and the people who came to work on it. I know that Donnie and Mark Gage spent an awful lot of time, and Eric Cooper as well, getting that out and about. In addition to that, there is an upcoming or a pending donation coming from the All Sports Boosters for the next phase of their project, which is two scoreboards for the main gym and the junior/senior high school, and two shot clocks. It's a roughly $16,000 donation. The company that we are purchasing it from will also install it, and the All Sports Boosters will actually donate the materials, not the money. They're looking at an installation date of about December 1st, and I have asked Marissa if she would speak a little bit about it in October. In addition to that, I know that GLP is very excited about a November 1st GLP pre-kindergarten playground going in. I don't know, I don't want to put you on the spot, Lauren, but is there anything that you want to say about that?
Flyers are going out to the community, to the GLP parents.
And this is all community-driven, too, right?
It is. We had a lot of donations from the Co-op, Eden Co-op, and we had some from the Community Foundation and PTA, and the official bill was November 1st. The flyers are going out for that. It's an all-day bill from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night.
Hey, Saturday, I believe?
It is. There's some pre-bill things that will happen a week prior, so October 30th, and then that...
And then they have to tear down the current playground as well.
The current playground is officially closed, because Dave Marcus Crew is doing a tear-down little by little, so that has been officially closed from now until the actual bill date.
And I heard that, I heard a rumor about a John Deere tractor, green color.
Very, very Eden community theme. It's all green and yellow, John Deere colors. It has a John Deere tractor going on it. It has cornstalks going on it.
It's awesome.
A very different-looking playground, because it is a pre-k community playground. We're really excited to have it come out and help the little, we're very excited. Anybody who wants to come out and help build, November 1st is the date. The flyers are going out.
Thank you so much for helping me get that description out. I'm done.
You're done, and I'm up. Veteran tax exemption, I think last month, we decided that we'll make the final decision where we go here, and I think we heard from everyone, but my question is, Scott, do you feel comfortable going forward with a non-binding resolution to the public? Could I use that?
I have to make a statement because of the attorneys. I am able to vote on this, but I have to state that I was in the Air Force for almost 10 years, and I am a veteran. But there is no conflict of interest. Saying that, I'd like to make the motion that on December 9th, we go to a non-binding referendum with the levels 18, 30, and 60.
And that mimics the way the town does for the veterans?
That mimics exactly what the town and the county gives them.
All right, do we have a second?
Could I just, go ahead, go ahead, I'm sorry.
He needs a second before we can go any further.
Second.
Discussion?
The only thing I'd like to say on the dates, because I know this was a point of conversation at the last board meeting, is that we have to be within a certain amount of time from the November, the actual November vote. So, December 9th gives us enough time as a district to get ready for a non-binding referendum with the 45 days that we need to within the paper, and also puts us at a place that is not close to the actual November vote for New York State. And in addition to that, just to clarify, that a non-binding referendum gives the board an idea of what the community wants to say, but the board can choose to vote on its own, regardless of what the community states. That's what non-binding actually means.
Yeah, I would just say that I'm going to oppose the referendum, because basically what I said before, I think it's something that we were elected to decide, and it's essentially passing the buck on a tough decision, because we're uncomfortable with it, so we're passing the buck. There's also additional expense entailed with this in running an election, which we're going to have to pass on to the taxpayers. So, I'm going to oppose the motion on those two bases.
Do we know what the expense is to the district?
When I checked, it was roughly $2,000.
And this will be in all towns and villages that...
All Eden, just like a regular voting.
What is all Eden, but like Boston and Angola that...
Yes, it's all Eden district.
Like you're doing a school budget vote.
Everybody that pays taxes in Eden, school taxes.
But again, it's one site that they would vote at?
One site right there in the flyer.
So, everybody within those districts would have to come to our location to vote?
Just like they do in May, yes.
Okay.
Can I just interject one thing? What are the hours going to be?
Well, we usually go 9 to 9.
Okay, we need to make sure we get that out there, because there's always somebody that shows up at our door at 6 o'clock, pounding on it, wanting to get in.
It always is.
All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Opposed. Abstentions, motion carries. Thank you.
Mrs. Thomasua, what is it that you need from us in order to make this happen?
We need to write an ad. We need to get a public notice writing. We usually run that by the attorney.
Okay.
That being added, adding expense.
Okay. Okay.
Future dates, next meeting is October 15th at 7:00 PM.
Real quick with that, Tom, did you get the responses you needed to have an earlier 6:00 meeting to go over the audit?
The email that I sent out, it looks like everyone is able to attend. Mr. Burns, I just want to confirm with you that you're... Yep, everyone is good.
Okay.
So, we'll have an audit committee meeting prior to, and then the audit will be in the Friday notes. Everyone will have it prior to, so everyone will be able to look at it before.
I move that the Board of Education anticipates entering executive session to this, well, I move that we enter executive session to discuss collective negotiations with the ETA and the employment history of a particular person or persons.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you for coming.